Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council on Monday, March 16th. I'd like to invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. Today, we have a special declaration by our mayor, and then we will move on to the regular business. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short, brief rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And I'd like to welcome our mayor, Larian Gaylord Baird. I believe you have an item for us to discuss. And I think we will entertain a motion at this time to suspend the rules of the City Council. The Ward of Excellence has been postponed. The recipient is unavailable at this time. Yes, Sandra?
Madam Chair and my colleagues, I move that we suspend our rules in order to deal with a matter of greater urgency.
Second.
Matter, motion to suspend the rules for this particular item?
Just to be clear, why we're suspending the rules? Because normally, it would require a length of time, days, between the introduction on our agenda and then our action. But because this is an emergency declaration, we're suspending the rules to take action today and hearing it the same day we take action.
Terrific. It was motioned by Washington, seconded by Christensen, to do exactly what Roy said. And we'd like to welcome our mayor to tell us a little bit about the suspension of the rules. I guess we have to vote, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, to suspend the rules, we do.
Okay.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then I will read the item into the record. It states, whereas the mayor of the city of Lincoln declared a state of emergency on March 16th, 2020, to protect the residents of the city of Lincoln from the potential spread and impact of the novel coronavirus 2019, known as COVID-19, resulting from the rapidly evolving outbreak. And whereas, the City Council wishes to approve and affirm the actions of the mayor pursuant to the declaration of a state of emergency in Executive Order 94155. And whereas, the City Council intends to extend the state of emergency for such time as is necessary to respond to the spread of COVID-19. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Lincoln, Nebraska, that the declaration of a state of emergency issued by the mayor on March 16, 2020, and found at Executive Order 94155, is hereby approved and extended beyond 72 hours pursuant to Lincoln Civil Code, Section 2.06.070. The mayor is authorized to use such emergency powers as may be found in Lincoln Civil Code, Section 2.06.050, for the duration of the state of emergency. The state of emergency shall remain in full force and effect until terminated by the mayor or the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the City Council, for allowing me to be here under these extraordinary circumstances this afternoon. Before I proceed, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the incredibly hardworking and dedicated city employees for their efforts as we respond to the novel coronavirus.
You're here.
They're working around the clock to protect the health and safety of our residents, and many of them are not even making time to shave. We're having to remind people to eat over at the Health Department as they work to provide the most accurate, timely, and up-to-date information and guidance for our entire community. Preparing our city for what's to come is why I'm here today. Our community is now at a critical juncture. The novel coronavirus and the disease it causes, COVID-19, has been declared a pandemic by the World Health Organization, and this virus will likely impact our city as it has so many cities across the country. And although we still have no confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Lincoln and Lancaster County at this moment, it's merely a matter of time before we do. It's imperative that we prepare and prevent the number of those cases from rising too quickly and overwhelming our healthcare sector and jeopardizing the safety of our residents. Earlier today, I did declare a state of emergency in Lincoln, and I now stand before you to respectfully request that you affirm that emergency declaration. This follows declarations made at both the federal and state levels of government. This step will allow us to do a couple of things. It'll allow us to deploy resources necessary to manage what will continue to be a rapidly evolving situation, to get access to potential federal and state reimbursements, and to access emergency reserve funds if needed. Your partnership in protecting the public has never been more needed or valued. Lincoln is fortunate to have you as thoughtful and dedicated servant leaders who are listening to the public, who are conveying their concerns, and helping to develop the response of this city. I really want to thank you for all of your tireless efforts and for allowing me to come before you today so that together, we can all work to protect the health and safety of the residents of Lincoln.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any comments, questions, concerns?
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
We're a team. Thank you.
I too want to echo the mayor's remarks about thanking our incredible Health Department, City County Health Department, Pat Lopez, our acting director, certainly your mayor's office, for the extent that you have been communicating nonstop, making sure our citizens are aware, that they get prepared, that they take every action they can to make sure that their families and our community continues to stay safe. And I also, on a personal note, want to thank the other folks that I know very well, the people in our grocery stores, who are really trying to take care of our customers and make sure that they have the food they need to keep their families safe. And I think it's really a partnership, and I'm truly grateful for the city staff and the work that they do, and I know they've been working around the clock. And so, thank you, Mayor, for the work that you're doing to make sure that people have the information they need. And I just want to throw out one more time, the Health Department hotline number, if anybody has any concerns. We have a staff ready to answer their questions, and I know you've been broadcasting it on our website, but it's 402-441-8006.
And if people have access to the internet, they can also go to health.lincoln NE.gov for the latest information about public health guidance and information as well from the CDC. And yes, thank you to not only city staff, but to all of our community response partners, the relationships, the strong relationships that the city of Lincoln enjoys with other sectors of the community, whether it's the healthcare sector, the business sector, our nonprofit partners. It's an incredible thing to behold because it is very much a strength of this community. And our community members will be the solution and will help see us through to recovery.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We can vote.
Who wishes to introduce them? I'll introduce.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. All right. Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, I guess we're on to regular agenda.
Okay. Next, then, is our public hearing consent agenda. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our consent agenda, our items 1 through 3, if anyone wishes to come forward to speak on these items.
Is there anyone that would like to testify on these items? Seeing none, we can move on.
All right. We can vote on these items. Items 1A and B were introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 2A was introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Washington, seconded by McGuinness. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. We just have one item. Item 4A is the manager application of Alex Ross Kelly for Jake Cigars and Spirits at 101 North 14th Street, Suite 1.
Hello, I'm Alex Ross Kelly. A-L-A-X-R-O-S-K-E-L-L-E-Y. The address is 101 North 14th Street with Jake Cigars.
Thank you. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
And you can sign in afterwards. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Well, we had a manager. We've been there for, well, 20-plus years now, and we had our manager leave. He'd been with us for about 15 years. I was on the manager, on the license as manager before he was there, and now he's moved on. So I'm taking it back over.
Terrific. And you said Jake's cigar bar has been around?
Yep, 1998, we opened the doors.
1998, okay. Terrific. Any questions? Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down.
I move approval of item 4A.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion on this issue? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for February 16 through February 29, 2020. Is there anyone here to testify on a claim?
Anyone wishing to testify on a claim? Okay, we can move on.
All right. Next, then, is item 5B, approving the transfer of funds from contingency to the Police and Fire Pension Fund to meet actuarial determined employer contribution requirements in an amount not to exceed $676,354.
I know we had a meeting on this last week. Does anybody need to ask any questions of staff? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? We can move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 5A is the claims against the city, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5B, then, is the transfer of funds from contingency to the Public, to the Police and Fire Pension Fund, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? We are obligated to do this?
Yeah.
To make sure the fund is where it is recommended to be by our actuaries.
Do you need to say something? We don't need you to do it.
Brandon, I didn't know you were here!
Sorry, I was watching on TV and just...
Okay.
We're being efficient today.
Yes, please tell us...
Would you like me to?
Just a quick summary would be wonderful.
Okay. So, there was a change in May of 2017 for the City Council when they voted on a measure to fully fund the Police and Fire Pension Fund, which requires that we meet a certain threshold, actuarially determined employer contribution. So that's what we call the ADEC rate. So, as we've discussed in the mid-biennium, our revenues have been lagging compared to projections, so, but this is the first year also that we have to meet a certain amount of dollars. So these transfers, in the past, you know, you could go up or down, but these have a certain required amount. So these transfers, we know what the first year is, that 326,354 that we're short. We've got an estimate for the second year, we think will come in better than that, but this gives me the authority to transfer that money over so we can meet that required threshold.
Terrific. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Truce, I think we can vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing ordinances, second reading. Items 6A and B will be called together. They are Annexation 20002, application of Staroska Lewis to annex approximately 11.15 acres, generally located at 9500 Adams Street, and the related change of zone for a change from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential on the same property at 9500 Adams Street.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today on behalf of Staroska Lewis, LLC. This application is for an 11-acre parcel. I'll put it up here on the map for you. It's been in your packets. That sat immediately east of the Prairie Village North Development, north of Adams Street, and east of what would be 95th Street. It was a parcel that was shown in the comprehensive plan for future urban development. We did stub a street in and a pedestrian easement for that development, but there was just one problem with it, and that is that it was very low-lying land compared to Prairie Village North. And so, in order to provide sewer to it, it basically needed to be developed as one lot in order to allow a private lift station to get the sewer back up into the street. So after sitting for some time, the Staroska Lewis group came to me and asked about the ability to do apartments there. And so, what I advised them is that we go talk to the planning department and see what would be reasonable. And the planning department came back with some feedback that said, if the parcel you're going to acquire here would comply with the R3 zoning CUP density, and if you would limit the apartments to two-story buildings, we think that would be amenable. So in September, we had a neighborhood meeting. Mr. Councilman Bowers was there, and of course, it's always, multifamily is always a surprise that is not taken lightly. But I'm happy to say that with his help, the help of the planning department, and then eventually, the neighborhood did hire Danae Kalkowski to represent them, that we worked out several compromises, including screening, that there would be no decks abutting the neighborhood, that we've got a temporary construction entrance off of Adams, so the traffic during construction wouldn't be going through the neighborhood. And there were several other items. I'd be happy to go in detail if you'd like, but we feel like we have satisfied them. One other item was, we are going to put some speed tables, speed humps in 94th Street, 94th Street, kind of, I'll show you another map. 94th Street is right here, and then it turns into Renegade Boulevard, and then it turns into Fremont Street, which all of the existing neighbors have figured out is a very nice route to get to Walmart if you want to do some shopping, or if you're going to go to Omaha to get to 84th Street and go north. And so, this subdivision was preliminary plotted with that street network back in 2007, and if the planning department were to do it again today, they would ask us to break up that road. It is not this long stretch. So our client has agreed to put in three different speed humps, one at a location here at a pet easement, another one here that's equidistant in between some lots here, and then, most importantly, one that would lead into, this will be a future neighborhood park right here. So, no small gesture, probably at least a $20,000 investment that he will need to make in tearing out the concrete and putting in the speed humps, slow traffic down. So when combined, I think we satisfied most of those neighbors. We still continue to work with the neighbors that abut, back up to us off of 95th Street in terms of some planting. We're giving them a 20-foot outlot where some streets, trees exist today, with a commitment, we're not taking down any of those trees. They'll own that outlot. And on the east side of that outlot, we're going to put up a six-foot high-screening fence. And generally, this land sits about, pretty close, between eight and 10 foot lower than the single-family homes. So a two-story apartment building roof would be at about the same height as a ranch house on 95th Street. And so that, in conjunction with the other elements we put in, I think we've got peace and general peace, and we come to you with a unanimous approval from the Planning Commission for all the items. The use permit was not appealed to you guys, so you just have the annexation and change zone. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Yes, Richard?
Could you pull up or put the annexation map up there again?
Sure.
I've got a question. Are we, okay, and that map's different than the one I'm looking at here. So we are annexing the full roadway on both sides?
Yeah, it's hard to see on their, I don't know, McGuinness, but it does come down here, so we get all the right-of-way, and we kind of come up the creek bed there.
And it's currently a county road that the city will take over, correct?
Yes. I mean, it's, you know, they go back and forth when they're in the three-mile like that, but we'll officially extend the county, or the city's, maintenance requirement to that road, which is relatively new concrete. We have had the benefit that the county, at their expense, did do a very expensive culvert project there.
And the city is not allowing any access from this development out onto Adams?
Correct.
Just temporary?
We have temporary construction access, and we have conditions that say that that has to be removed before occupancy permits can be granted on any of the apartment buildings. They plan on building all, there are seven buildings, building them at once, and yes, to the dismay of the neighbors, they really wanted that, but that is not in compliance with the access management policies. And so, LTU said that they would not want to grant a permanent access into this area off of Adams Street.
So it's the LTU that's not giving, or planning, that's not giving the access?
Correct. It was a decision by LTU.
The developer would have liked to add access?
I think the developer was somewhat indifferent. If it was to be given access, there would be a very expensive set of turn lanes that needs to be put in, and I think that was LTU's reasoning to not allow it because turn lanes in this general vicinity would begin to conflict with the turn lanes at 92nd Street in terms of the tapers and radiuses and everything else that needs to be getting straightened out. So it's, it was not, and that was the reasoning, it was not the appropriate distance as shown. And then we get into floodplain issues and lots of other things going on there to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, James?
No, I just want to say, you know, it was, I appreciate you working with the neighbors, appreciate you keeping me involved since the beginning, and I'm really appreciative of the neighbors advocacy, like Todd Farasik and Sue Collins, who took a real leadership role. So thank you for working with them, being willing to work with them, and come to this compromise.
Well, we appreciate your leadership on it, and yeah, I think at the end of the day here, we're going to have a nice expansion of this area, like I said, that just was not going to work for pure, single-family, and we're doing as low an impact as we can. So we'd like to move forward with it and get the speed humps going for them and all that good stuff.
And I just have a couple of quick questions. How far is that setback from the property line? You mentioned that there is an outlot that the trees will be maintained, and then, after that, there will be a fence.
So hopefully, the colors show up well here for you. So the green is from the back of their property lines, a 20-foot outlot. Then where the red is, is where then we will put up a six-foot screening fence all along the property, come around behind a set of garages, and across the end of the parking lot there. And then, but from the red line to the buildings is another 20-foot setback.
Okay.
So from the buildings to the property line, it'll be 40 foot with a fence in the middle, and then we also agreed that there would be no decks on the exterior. There are at-grade patios, which are very low, but on the second story, no decks facing to the single-family homes.
Okay. And I thought there were some residents that had comments stating that this isn't a floodplain.
The floodplain, we have delicately avoided. It goes, it is that hatch pattern right here.
Okay.
And it does come up the street. But all of the buildings, as we have engineered them, are on land that is currently out of the floodplain, and we will ensure that we are several feet above the map floodplain. In the event there's a very large vent, but that's, this is the Stevens Creek Basin, which has been done under the new modeling system, so we're pretty confident about it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. I see County Engineer Pam Dingman. Did you have some comments on this project?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, 444 Cherry Creek Drive. We did replace the box culvert that you were annexing last year. It was one of the ones that was heavily damaged in the flood. This is a federal aid route, so the Federal Highway Administration paid, reimbursed us for 80% of that construction, and it is also a brand-new asphalt surface. So I just want to be on record that I don't always give you guys that infrastructure. But I am happy, nevertheless, to give you this bridge-length box culvert.
Well, I think we all want to say thank you for your efforts to qualify and get the culvert repaired and get the beautiful asphalt down. We appreciate that very much, and I'm sure the neighbors will as well. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure. Sure.
I see Danae out in the audience, and I think she did a great job representing the
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
neighbors, and so thank you for your work also, along with the neighbors that were able
Next then is 7C.
to come to a compromise. So thank you, Danae.
7D. Change of zone 07063D as in Dog, application of ringneck development LLC to annex approximately
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, we can move on to the next.
That concludes our public hearing. 10.55 acres of property generally located at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge Streets, We can move into the voting session. Item 7A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are introduced by Schob. assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter E by creating the classification of
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington? human resources specialist introduced by Schob.
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
So moved.
Christensen?
Second.
Yes.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Raybold?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Schob? Washington?
Yes.
Yes.
Ward? Bowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis? Next then is item 7F.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Change of zone 07063E as in Edward, application of ringneck development for a change from Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. AG Agricultural to R3 Residential, planned unit development on property generally located Next is item 7B. at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge Streets, introduced by Schob. Amending the pay schedule for E classifications to delete the classifications of compensation
So moved. Second.
technician one, compensation technician two, employment technician one, and employment technician
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
two, introduced by Schob. Washington?
Yes.
So moved.
Bowers?
Second.
Yes.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen.
Christensen?
Yes.
Any discussion?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington? Schob?
Yes.
Yes.
Bowers? Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Christensen? Motion carried, seven to zero.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Next then is 7C. Schob?
Yes.
Annexation 19011, application of Ring Neck Development LLC to annex approximately 10.55 acres of property generally located at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge Streets, introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself until 7G.
Okay, you are recused. No further discussion, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then is 7C.
D.
7D. Change of zone 07063D as in Dog, application of Ring Neck Development LLC for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential, planned unit development on property generally located at Northwest 56th and West Holdridge Streets, introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion?
Real quick.
Yes, Richard.
Well, again, this is a good thing because we're bringing in more housing stock in the area, and we're also moving and connecting over to Northwest 56th Street along here. So it's kind of pushing our city limits out there, but it's a good thing.
Terrific. Okay, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is 7E. Annexation 20003, application of ringneck development to annex approximately 71.83 acres, generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge, introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion, Richard?
Yeah, planning, if you'd come up for a second. I know I asked this before last meeting and such, but why isn't, why isn't the city annexing this whole piece of ground all the way over to Northwest 56th Street?
Sure. Currently there are no plans to, there are no projects to develop that further to the west, as was discussed at the hearing previously, that the land area to the south of West Vine is also separated out from what we're talking about today, separate from what will end up being the school site. So we have other technically phases of this land that still are yet to be determined, so we're acting on the area that we know of today.
So the school doesn't have any plans for this? Would they, are they going to surplus this ground?
At this time, they don't have any plans for it, so we don't really have that information before us right now.
Oh, it really wouldn't cost them anything to annex it because they don't pay property taxes. Instead, I guess they want to, they'll be owning ground in the country, which they do.
Correct.
And it's in a different school district.
I think it's.
So this ground will, it's still in a different school district. I'm just, and then my only other thought was the access over to Northwest 58th Street across, I guess will be there for the school?
Over to 56th Street?
Yeah, Northwest 56th Street.
Yeah, I think in the long term, when there are plans to further develop it, as was testified to at the last meeting, that the further connection over by Vine Street over to 56th Street won't occur until such time that that development is in and before us for some type of approval. So we will limit that access to 56th Street until that time, which is a good thing in the sense of that that street is unimproved, and we want to make sure that we're not getting over to certain areas that we're not ready to annex.
Northwest 56th, I'm just looking at the school plans, will be used a lot. Will have a lot of higher, probably a lot more traffic. In a way, we're setting this up, the schools are kind of like they did with Southwest, with one, maybe two exits out. And so I have a concern that they're not connecting over to Northwest 56th Street.
Yeah, I think, and actually, a couple of things going on there. So a lot of study went into kind of the improvements that would go forward on Holdridge. And so the traffic for Holdridge as it gets improved, and then the fact that we do have an improved Northwest 48th Street, which is a great asset out there for the purpose of what we're talking about today, that the traffic will work. And again, the lack of improvement on 56th Street, I think would only be exacerbated if we made a connection over to it at this time, so that was part of the calculation as well, so that it made sense to do it the way that we're doing it right now.
Okay, and I agree. It's awful nice that we have a road belt there.
Yes.
It's kind of different than Southwest, that we didn't have a road belt before we opened the school.
Yes, we were happy with that, too.
I just have a concern that we aren't annexing it all the way over.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then is item 7F. Change of zone 07063E as in Edward, application of ringneck development for a change from AG Agricultural and H3 Planned Unit Development to R3 Planned Unit Development with updates to site layout on property generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge Streets, introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Not quite there yet.
Not quite yet.
One more.
One more? Okay. Approving, so 7G is approving amendment number one to the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center Conditional Annexation Zoning Agreement between the City, Ring Neck Development, and Lincoln Public Schools to purchase and develop approximately 118.60 acres for a future public school site on property generally located at Northwest 48th and I-80, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, at this time, we need to?
Bring back Councilman?
Bring back Councilman James Michael Bowers? Yes?
There was a motion to amend.
Oh.
Oh, yes, there was.
Oh.
Well, let's do it.
So let's have a motion to reconsider.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider 20R83.
And Christensen seconded.
Yes, thank you.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Now we'll do the motion to amend.
All right.
To adopt a substitute agreement.
To adopt the substitute agreement.
So, second.
Introduced by Washington, seconded by Christensen, and it is the reason?
Can we get an explanation? Yeah.
It's at the bottom.
Yes.
I can read it, or perhaps someone else can read it.
Maybe you can read it, and then I can answer any questions.
The reason for request is to amend section 4.1.4 to set a date certain for construction of the West Vine Street improvements that allow access to the neighboring Dowd property to the south, and to amend exhibit H-1 to show extension of Southwest 50th Street south to the Dowd property. A requirement that the second western access to the Dowd property appear conceptually on the PUD is added to section 4.1.5. These additions were made at the request of the state of Nebraska and?
Extra words.
Force-majeure language is also added to the section 4.1.4 and 4.1.4.
What did she say?
Abby Luttrell from the law department. And I can just briefly show you. Here's exhibit I. Down here is, this is the Dowd property. When this was initially annexed, they lost their access here. State and road improvements here took access away from this property. So they said, "Develop a ringneck school. You must give them access here at some point in the future." So when the state reviewed this amendment, they said, "We'd like something more certain, saying when you will get this access done." So that's what those changes do, and they also just kind of clarified the exhibits showing how those road extensions will, in the future, give access to that lot down there to the south. The force-majeure language is reflective of kind of what we're going through now, that if something happens, and it's force of nature, that they don't have to perform on that timeline.
Can you tell us who's responsible for the construction of those extensions?
I believe it is the developer, Ring Neck.
And?
And it really doesn't change their obligation to construct that. That isn't any different than it was the first time that this annexation agreement was approved. All it does is sets a timeline. And that's what the state wanted to see.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, Richard?
So we are not, we're just amending the zoning request and not a PUD anywhere?
This is the annexation agreement.
Okay, so we're amending the annexation agreement.
Correct.
To require them to build a road or not build a road? Okay.
At a certain time.
They were already required to develop the road, they were just left nebulous wind.
Exactly. Right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I think we can vote on the amendment.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Luttrell.
We can welcome James Michael Bowers back, and it's my turn to recuse myself.
Wait, what?
We have musical chairs.
Continue playing with the mandale? A council member down.
And Richard, you have the gavel?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good. I will read items 7G, I'm sorry, 7H. Change of zone 19026, application of the 8801 LLC for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential, and from AG Agricultural to R5 Residential, both on portions of property generally located at 8801 Holdridge Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded?
I would like to make a delay with no date certain, please, or I'd make a motion to?
Place on pending?
Place on pending with no date certain.
Second. Would this just be 7H?
7H and 7I.
I haven't called 7I yet, so we'll do that next.
Okay, just 7H.
Right now, yeah.
We have a motion to delay this to pending, no date certain?
Can I just comment on why I will support this?
Okay.
It has been my experience that when things are kind of in a little bit of a churn to figure out who's going to do what, it almost never works out very well if we try to amend or solve issues from the dais. And this puts the burden to figure out what's going on back on the parties involved, so we don't have to do this from the dais. We just vote on what's presented to us that the participants have agreed upon.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Madam Clerk, call 7I.
Is approving a conditional zoning agreement with Houseman Development for property at 8801 Holdridge Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded?
And I would like to make a motion that we put this on pending with no date certain, please.
Second. Been moved and seconded, that we put this on pending for no date certain. Any other comments?
Just a comment would, we'd be ready to vote on this as soon as it is brought back to us with a completed, agreed-upon plan.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We'll get our turn. That'll do it, too, right?
All right. Okay, Teresa. Our resolutions on first reading are Items 8A through E.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's been a request to delay Item 8E until the 30th of March, so that individuals who are concerned with this can attend the meeting in the evening time, so I move a delay to the 30th of March.
Second.
This is delay of the public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Of the public hearing on Item 8E. Any discussion? Please call the roll. And who seconded that? Christensen, or McGinnis. McGinnis, okay. McGinnis, introduced by Christensen. Thank you. Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Our ordinances on first reading are Items 9A through E. Our pending list are Items 10A through...
It's moving. So, Roy, would you motion to adjourn?
I would say, Madam Chair, before I move to adjourn, I would say, he has something to say.
I do. Jeffery Patrick, City Attorney. If you're going to discuss whether or not, what kind of schedule the City Council wants to have, I would suggest you have that discussion prior to adjournment.
Thank you. Okay, smart.
So, it has been brought to the attention of the Lincoln City Council, that the Omaha City Council has moved to, I guess, adjourn. Any meetings until April 25th?
Their last one will be tomorrow, and they will not meet again until April 21st.
They will not meet again until April 21st. And so, we had some concern expressed by several council members, is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? Can we communicate in other ways possible, or should we continue to meet? And does anyone have any thoughts?
I do. Mr. Christensen? Go ahead. I spoke with a couple of the councilwomen, councilmembers, Councilwoman Ward specifically, and while I feel the need for the council to be an upfront and effective organization that meets regularly and votes on things regularly, it's also challenging for me to explain to residents of our community that they should stay at home and take care of themselves while we're out and about not staying home taking care of ourselves. So, it's concerning to me that we found ourselves in this position, but I feel we really should consider following our own instruction and staying away from large groups.
Man, Christensen?
I understand that, but I also understand that we have not met the requirements that the governor and the mayor put in place to trigger certain limitations at this point in Lincoln. For example, we've not had a community case of COVID-19. But I also feel that since we just took somebody's...
Development.
Development and put it on pending, no date certain, that this might be a premature action today. And if it became necessary in our minds collectively to do this, for example, we could just meet, and the first item of business would be to suspend the meeting until a certain date. But right now, I think it might be just a little bit early.
Tammy, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like Councilman Showb, because I, too, am out advocating to the public, stay home when you can, and so I feel an obligation to walk the walk, if you would, sort of. You know, many of us, we all go back to our own experiences or what we do in our daily lives besides council, and many of you run businesses, I run a small business, you know, and many of us, not apples to apples, but, you know, I lived through a government job where we had 9/11 and dealt with anthrax and open mail in those circumstances, and tried to operate business then, so I always try to make good judgments based on my own experience. But like Councilman Showb, you know, I'm willing to do business when we need to do business, and if we need to come back in and vote on situations like we dealt with today, I think that's appropriate. I just think we need to do our part in flattening the curve, and I think we all have a responsibility to do that. That's, I think, if we're going to beat this back in this community, as citizens, we have that responsibility, and above that, as public officials, we really have that responsibility to set that example for the public. So, that's my point of view.
Sandra, you had a comment?
I understand the reason why this conversation is being had right now, and I must admit that my very first question to all of us is, what are the pieces of business that need to continue so that the City of Lincoln still operates? And I like the idea of walking the walk, but I also don't want to leave the City of Lincoln in some kind of flux because City Council hasn't met to take care of necessary business. And I also know that we, at some point, you know, when we look at our pay stub, we are employees of the City of Lincoln, and there are many hundreds, hundred thousands of employees for the City of Lincoln who are making these kinds of decisions, whether or not they come into work, whether that they have a telework policy or whatever, many of them are putting themselves out there, so I don't want to hold myself as somewhat different than many other city employees, though I am not, I have no responsibility for health and safety. So, I don't feel like I'm critical in that vein.
Right.
I got to say, I just changed my mind, and I'll tell you why. My phone just buzzed, and the governor has just announced that he is asking that statewide, the gatherings be limited to 10 people or less, following the guidance from the Center for Disease Control.
10.
10 people or less. So, that's the guidance that just now came from the governor, based on CDC recommendations.
So, the question to Jeff, has the City Council ever taken an action like this to suspend meetings until further notice?
My memory doesn't go back that far. Certainly, I don't recall where it's ever been discussed. I'm standing here patiently because I have a responsibility for a couple of items for first reading today, that if they're not voted on this month, will suspend service or cause the city a fair amount of money. Okay, that's not your problem. Well, I suppose you could vote on them today. It's, it would be unusual, I don't know that being opposition, but certainly people aren't on notice if they wanted to object to them. On the other hand, I would be concerned if we don't vote on them today, and sometime between now and next Monday, you decide not to come back together for good and valid emergency reasons. So, perhaps a prudent thing to do, I'm talking about Items 8D and 8...
8C.
8C and 8D.
And 8D, yes. Maybe the prudent thing to do would be to vote to suspend the rules and vote on those two items today.
I move to suspend the rules in order to vote on Items 8C and D.
Is there a second to this motion?
I second that.
Move to suspend by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion?
Over here, both of us have a discussion. I'm only concerned about the public hearing portion of the program. We're not allowing the public to weigh in if we do suspend and vote on these things today. This first reading was the announcement, the next month you'll, next week, you'd have a chance to speak on them.
I have a question about process. If we were to, if we were to hold City Council next week, what is the fewest number of people that we can pull together if we wanted to stay underneath the governor's mandate of no more than 10?
We're it now.
I mean, we're...
It'd be the seven council members.
We have seven council members, two clerks, and the city attorney. That's 10.
And what are the penalties if we go over 10? The challenge, and there is none, but, I mean, the challenging part, as we discussed in your director's meeting, is that this is a public meeting and must remain a public meeting. We have no, I would suggest that, I'm not sure the mayor has any power, even under the emergency disaster declaration, to declare it a non-public meeting. And so, theoretically, 1,000 people could show up, certainly enough to push you over 10. And I don't know if you say, what can the governor do? I know a lot of things that we're asking the people of Lincoln to do, we being the city and the administration, is not a matter of, you can't get together, we're going to close you down, it's more a matter of, we're in this together, these are the best recommendations, we're asking you to follow that.
Right. I wouldn't ask any of us to go against what the governor has suggested, I mean, I think that's part of walking the walk, is that we take those same measures that are being asked of everyone. But I would like to know if, do we have any way to hold a meeting next week in such a way as that we do not have more than 10 people gathered?
Well, you can, you can control how many people show up from your body. If you have four, you can conduct business. If you're conducting non-controversial business, that allows you to continue moving, moving forward as a city. You can't control how many people from the public attend and want to participate. I suggest you could control how many people entered those chambers at a time, as long as you allow them to come in and speak. So, maybe that would be a compromise we could visit about.
And that goes back to the discussion that we had at our director's meeting, is it possible for folks to be in the other room, waiting, and as soon as your agenda item is called, then you may come into the chamber, that way that we can still maintain our seven...
Bouncer with a clicker, can't he?
Yeah. I mean, is that considered, you know, when the item on our agenda is something that they wanted to present public hearing to, they could come into the room, but they would be able to watch it live on in the other room?
And would we be willing to limit ourselves to just bare minimum quorum, so that we have Team A and B?
And keep in mind that if we limit ourselves to four members, all votes have to be unanimous.
In order to adopt anything.
So, I guess, is it possible, perhaps, that, we've had a good discussion, oh, yes, please come forward.
No, I think...
We're getting some good advice from all legal...
Chris Conley, City Law Department. The question, I guess I have, is, Councilman Christensen, was that a recommendation from the governor, or was it an order?
Well, it doesn't say order.
My guess is it's a recommendation.
Right, based on CDC guidelines.
Yes. So, having said that, there's, there's not any kind of a violation as such, if you go against that for a very short meeting, you could still have all the kinds of restrictions you're talking about here, and still proceed with it. The one item there, 8D, just so you're aware, the big CAD contract?
Yes.
If we don't get that approved by the end of the month, we lose a $50,000 discount. Okay? I am not here to say that the money is more important than the health of the citizens of Lincoln, okay? The opposite is absolutely true. However, if, if we're confident enough that we can conduct some kind of a meeting, then I think it's incumbent upon us to try and do that, so that we can continue to do some city business. The other part of that agreement, of course, is it would input and allow for installation of this CAD system that we've been trying to get done for the last eight months, really, trying to, trying to get that deal put together, and install it so that it works better for the citizens of Lincoln as well. And so, that would greatly stall that out if it didn't happen soon. So, anyway, I'm sorry, that's the comments, I had them, open to questions right now.
Well, we're, we're on discussion, so it's good.
Yeah, real quick, do we, we have the right to adjust our agenda any way we want coming up, right? You do, you do. You have control over your agenda. I mean, as we generally operate, the administration places items before you for your consideration, but you don't have to consider them. And you can request the administration limit itself to essential items. And there may be others on here that we didn't know about, that could be cost in people, jobs, money. Or there could be some emergency items that come before, and I would suggest, I understand everyone's concerned about setting a good example, and I think that's important, but we expect LFR to show up, we expect LPD to show up, because they're essential to our public safety. I would suggest that there are some things this council may have to do that is essential to the public safety, the community, and you might want to keep that in mind as well. That was a good argument, I like that.
Tammy?
So, I would, to everybody's point about conducting business, I don't think we can just decide today. So, I think, to your point, Council Chair, we need to really think through this, for a lot of points that have been made, and because Items 8C and D are on first reading, and they're, particularly 8D is significant, I'd like to give that some more time and not vote on that today if we have that choice. But think about how we can get together to conduct business without delaying that, because it is important, especially in line of what Mr. Conley just said, I'm losing money. So, we have to be, I think, very mindful about any decision we make, but first reading items, I'm just not comfortable with a vote on those today.
Roy?
So, with the fact that this situation is changing hour by hour, I think making a decision on whether we meet next week or not might be premature, and I think that decision should be left to the Chair and the Vice Chair outside of our official meetings. And an announcement could be made later this week...
Depending upon the changing circumstances.
About what we're going to be doing on next Monday. But, just a reminder, we do have a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, how do we get rid of that?
We have not voted.
We have not voted.
That's still in front of us.
Okay. Well, I guess, the sentiment that I'm hearing before we take the vote is that we probably should meet an additional week. The Chair and the Vice Chair have been given the task, should other changing circumstances happen, then we, we can possibly delay. But I guess, and I heard from Tammy that you would feel better if we delayed voting on these two items until after the public hearing, which means that we will be meeting an additional week, and we will be meeting on Monday, March 24.
I will withdraw my motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Oh, that's, thank you.
And that takes care of it pretty easily.
No voting, yeah.
No voting.
But I would also recommend that whatever we do next Monday, if we do meet...
We could suspend the rules then and vote.
Well, it could also be a abbreviated agenda.
Yes, essential.
I want to work with you on that.
Yeah. Okay, so we will withdraw the motion to suspend, and the second was Washington, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, do you consent to that?
Yes, I consent.
Okay.
I just, Madam Chair, one more question.
Yes.
Learning curve, but we have the ability to have an emergency meeting or a special